I'd like to call to order the Monday, January ninth, two thousand and twelve, regular meeting of the thirty-fourth Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Kadekell?
Here.
Councilmember Plaid Onson?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here.
The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
It has been moved by Mayor Protem Turbrak, supported by Councilmember Kadekell. Are there any additions, changes? Very good. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Here.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. The agenda has been approved. And now I see Reverend Sullivan here with us, so would you please stand for the invocation?
Let's pray. Father God, I thank you for this evening. Thank you for this new year and the opportunity that we have to gather together this thirty-fourth council in Berkeley. And Lord, I thank you for blessing this city with leaders who see fit to begin this meeting by calling out to you and asking for your favor, for your help, for your wisdom. And so, God, we do ask for your wisdom. I pray that each of our leaders, God, these public servants who have been elected to positions to serve, and, God, have proven over many years their desire to serve and have done so much for the city. I pray, God, that you bless them. I pray that this, this meeting and the meetings in the future this year would be enjoyable. I pray that this team of leaders would enjoy working together, and our city would benefit greatly because of it. God, I thank you that you love Berkeley, you love the people of Berkeley, and I pray that your presence would be experienced throughout our city. God, this year, may two thousand and twelve be a year of great blessing for this city. I pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we come to the Citizens' Comments section of the agenda, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on the agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Well, having said all that, we move to the next item then. The Consent Agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Item number one, Approval of the Minutes, Regular Meeting of the Thirty-Fourth City Council on Monday, December nineteenth, two thousand and eleven. Item number two, Resolution Number R six dash twelve, Matter of Adapting a Resolution Recognizing Dorothy Canty. Item number three, Recognitions and Presentations.
Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Move to approve. Support.
It has been moved by Councilmember Kadekell, supported by Councilmember Baker. Any discussion? Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
And O'Dwyer?
Yes. So we move now. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations and Presentations, matter of any recognition or presentations from the Consent Agenda.
I have asked Councilmember Baker to read tonight's resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's indeed an honor to read this proclamation this evening. A resolution recognizing Dorothy Canty for her dedication in service to the nursing profession and congratulating her on the occasion of her ninetieth birthday. Whereas, Dorothy began her career as a nurse after graduating from Saint Vincent School of Nursing in Erie, Pennsylvania in nineteen forty-three. And whereas, over the years, Dorothy has worked in obstetrics as well as surgical and psychiatric nursing, and since nineteen seventy-three has worked in Dr. Allan Bolton's OBGYN clinic in the city of Berkeley, Michigan. And whereas, Dorothy was recognized by the State of Michigan in two thousand and seven as Michigan's longest-serving nurse and has practiced for nearly seven decades. And whereas, Dorothy has continued to work as she experienced many changes in the field, in the field of medicine throughout the years. Medicine began wiping out killer diseases and managing others. In delivery wards, moms who were unconscious during delivery as husbands paced the hallways began having babies again, awake and with loved ones at their sides. And whereas, during her tenure as a nurse, Dorothy has been known for her exceptional bedside manner and extraordinary compassion with her patients. And whereas, Dorothy, in her spare time, enjoys traveling and spending time with her friends and family. And whereas, while Dorothy was serving the community and making a home in the city of Berkeley, she, alongside her late husband, Bill, to whom she was married for forty-six years, raised five children, Tim, Julianne, Gary, Darlene, and Lori. And she loves and enjoys her ten grandchildren and nine great-grandchildren. And whereas, on January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve, Dorothy will be celebrating her ninetieth birthday, and we all hope to have as much energy and spirit as Dorothy. Now, therefore, it be resolved that on behalf of the citizens of Berkeley, the city council and the city council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, does hereby recognize and thank Dorothy Canty for her decades of dedication and outstanding service to the nursing profession and congratulate Dorothy on the occasion of her ninetieth birthday. Introduced and passed this ninth day of January two thousand and twelve, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dorothy, would you like to come to the microphone?
[laughing] Well, there isn't much I can say that hasn't already been said for me. I guess I must have enjoyed nursing. We wouldn't have stayed this long. There's been a lot of changes, as you have mentioned, over the years, and I'm sure there's going to be many more. But I, I guess if you like it, you can go along with all those changes. I know some of the doctors I worked with many years ago might not quite approve of what we do today because the nurses don't stand back like they used to. But I think it's just a case of loving what you do and having such a beautiful family. I'm very fortunate in that, and that they're all around me. As you can see, they took up half of the room. And that doesn't even include a lot of the grandchildren. But I just want to thank you for being so kind to recognize this. I never thought it was going to be something that was so recognizable. But I do appreciate it, believe me. So, thank you again for all you have said, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
I'd also like to thank the members of the family who are here this evening, who came to mark this occasion. And we're grateful to all of them. I think, and we're grateful as well to all nurses. I think we are all aware of the technological advances in healthcare today and the technical work that nurses do. I think it is important for us to remember that the key feature of nursing is caring and wanting to make a difference. I think, Dorothy, you made an enormous difference, and we thank you. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number two?
Yes. Resolution Number R one dash twelve, Matter of Adapting Resolution Establishing the Annual Policy and Guide for Granting an Exemption from Payment of Property Taxes.
Is there a motion to approve R one twelve?
Motion to approve.
Has been approve, uh, moved by Mayor Protem Turbrak, seconded by Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Sessa?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This item is something that appears before you once a year. These are the guidelines that are done in accordance with Public Act nineteen ninety-four as amended. And basically, what this does is, is it gives the guidelines for our local Board of Review to determine if a qualified resident is exempt or partially exempt from the payment of property taxes. Once the city council makes this decision, then the, these, this information is then utilized by the Board of Review, which begins on March first, two thousand and twelve, and ends on the last day of December, two thousand and twelve, or I should just say, end sometime in December of two thousand and twelve, during their Board of Review meeting. I'm very pleased, Your Honor, to let you know that this evening we have with us Tracy Jones. She is the Chief of Equalization, and she is here along with also our assessor, Jane Stafford, to answer any questions. Now, I'm, I'm sure you may, you may not recognize some of these individuals. They're new to our city in terms of not their work, but the fact that we do have a different representation. I know that Jane, Jane has, has replaced Jim that we've had like forever and a day, as they say. And I, we joked a little while ago that I thought that Jim was the chief. But, but Tracy is, is the chief, and, and Jane works for her and with her. And she, they are both here to introduce themselves to our public and maybe just say a few words as to some of the things that are available to our residents out there who, who may need these types of assistance. And of course, if the city council has any questions as well. So Tracy, would you like to start, if you don't mind?
I'm Tracy Jones. I'm Chief of Equalization, as she said. We actually contract with thirty-one CVTs, cities, villages, and townships. Jane has been assigned to Berkeley. As far as poverty exemptions go, the city council adopts the resolution that sets the guidelines. And if a resident feels that they meet the guidelines as far as income and assets, then the Board of Review is free to make a decision lowering their taxable value so that they're, they get some relief from the tax bill. So it may be, it's usually on a sliding scale from, you know, no relief to full relief, depending on the qualifications of the applicant.
My name is Jane Stafford, and as Tracy said, I'm the newly appointed assessor. And I've already had the pleasure of working with David and his staff at the July and December Boards. And I'm always available for questions. I know a lot of the Berkeley residents call the city here, but I get a lot of questions forwarded on to me, which is great. I, you know, appreciate people calling, and I like to come out and review properties. And whenever a taxpayer has a question, I'm always available to answer questions.
Just one more comment. Yeah, I, I want to take this opportunity to also express my appreciation publicly to Oakland County. We have been contracting with Oakland County for assessment services for many, many years. And I can tell you that you all have done an excellent job, and we appreciate your work. I especially appreciate your time that you take with our residents. Whenever there's any questions, you all do an excellent job, so thank you. I don't know if our, our finance director, Mr. David Sabuda, would like to say anything else? Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Madam Manager. Appreciate it. I would. What I'd like to do right now is take a little time and talk about the application process, that, that the residents need to go through on an annual basis in order to achieve or receive this type of, of tax break. As Tracy and Jane stated earlier, you must qualify by, number one, being the resident of the home, is a, it is a residence, it is a residence in, in the city, and that you meet the income and asset levels that are set forth within this, this guideline that the council's considering tonight. The change is only for one year, so you have to do this every year. Applications are at the city of, the city Treasury Office, and you can get those Monday through Friday, eight AM to, eight-thirty AM to five PM here at the city. We are closed from one to two for lunch. And there are a lot of, lot of detail that you need for this application, and you must provide as much of that information that we're requesting as possible. The forms need to be notarized and returned back to the Treasury Department. And if there's any questions, we're on hand at any time to field those questions. The applications will go out to people who annually ask for them. We will mail them out to the homes, so we do that as a service beginning in February. But anybody can walk in here at, at the City Hall at Treasury Department and pick up those applications. The sooner, again, the better. And then, once we have those, we turn them over to the assessor and the board, and then the board utilizes that information in order to render a decision. And again, earlier the better. We get better decisions if we get the information sooner.
Okay. Mr. Sessa?
One more thing, Your Honor. We are in the process right now of, of working with the, with the county to develop some type of program, cable program, so that we can better inform our residents as to how to prepare, you know, the information that they're going to need when they go before the Board of Review. But I understand from, from Tracy that there may be some other, other meetings that are being held. If you don't mind, Tracy, let the public know.
Sometime in early February, we'll be sending out the assessment change notices. What give, they give you last year's assessment and SEV, state equalized value. They also give you last year's taxable value. And then they give you the tentative two thousand and twelve assessment, SEV, and taxable value. There should be an insert in that, and they, we will have three meetings sponsored by Oakland County Equalization. And those are meetings to inform the public the types of things to expect at the Board of Review, the types of information they need to bring with them if they're in disagreement with their assessment, because March is the time to take care of that. That's really the only opportunity people have if they feel they're assessed too high, unless they feel that there's been mutual mistake or something like that, which would be like a clerical error, that something got an extra zero or three or four added on. There's a couple of other times of year we can take care of those specific types of things. But really, March is the only time where you have to argue value with us.
However, if I may, Mr. Mayor, poverty, you can ask for a poverty exemption at any time in either February, I'm sorry, either in March, July, or in December. So, as Tracy has pointed out, you want to, you want to discuss your tax, your, your taxable value or your SEV, you can do that only in March, but the poverty guidelines, either in March, December, or July.
Can I add one thing to that?
Certainly.
You're only allowed to apply once, apply once a year. So if you apply in March and the board makes a decision and it's a no change, you're not allowed to apply again in July or December. It's a one time a year.
Very good. Are there any questions from the Council? Councilmember Baker?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks to you both for coming out this evening to help explain this to us and to the, to the public. The, many of my questions have already been addressed, so I just wanted to ask about the, the levels that are set forth in the ordinance that we're looking at, or the memo and the materials here tonight. Have this, have the levels changed? Have they gone up? Have they gone down? And what would that mean for our, for our potential applicants?
Mr. Mayor, I can, I can address the councilman's question, if I may?
You may.
Thank you. The values have gone up, one, one and a half percent, between one and one and a half percent. There are eight levels, depending on how many households are in, or how many individuals are in your household, excuse me. And both your income level and the asset levels have risen by one and a half percent. The, the levels, the dollar values are set by the, the Federal Department of, of Housing and, or I'm sorry, U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. So, we don't pick these numbers up. They're coming from the federal government. And on the asset limit, this is what we do is, the asset limits were established a long time ago, and we raise those or lower those based upon how poverty levels go up or go down. So, at the end of the day, the numbers are up slightly. But the board does have discretion, and they can waive any one of the numbers, meeting whatever they think is best based upon that case that they have in front of them for the day. Okay?
Excellent. Thank you. And thank you again for coming out.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Ms. Jones and Ms. Stafford for coming. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll then?
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Prince, would you please call item number three on the agenda?
Resolution Number R dash two dash twelve, Matter of Adapting a Resolution Approving an Amendment to the Flagstar Bank Pricing Contract for the City of Berkeley to Provide Positive Pay Maintenance Service.
Is there a motion to approve R two twelve?
Move, move to approve. Support.
It has been moved by Councilmember Kadekell and supported by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa?
Council, you may recall, back in July of last year, we had a fraudulent vendor check situation. It's, it's, it's a, it's a situation, unfortunately, where an individual takes one of our vendors, vendor checks and, and copies it. And today's electronic software that's out there, these checks can be copied almost as if it came specifically from the city. I mean, it'll have the signatures to the point. I mean, the software out there is, is very, very good. So unfortunately, there are individuals out there that if they get access to, to our checks, can do this. And for, this is, or at least it happened twice, once in July and once in September of last year. And since I've been the city manager here, it's the first time that we've ever had to deal with this type of situation. However, we quickly took steps in order to address this issue. As you know, we, we, we changed our accounts, we changed our checks, and obviously, the signatures on those checks had changed as well. We had a new city clerk, and we took steps very, very quickly. And actually, our, our bank, our Flagstar Bank was very good. They were, they were the ones that, that brought it to our attention. And, and thanks to the, to the excellent training that they have of their tellers, they were able to, to stop an incident, at least in the first one, from actually occurring. And, and the bank was willing to work with us and reimburse us for whatever dollars we'd lost and, and so forth and so on. So they did an excellent job in helping us address this issue. However, as you well know, this can't continue. This cannot happen again. And this is something that, that we will, that we are recommending to the city council to consider so that we can do our best to avoid it. Now, will this not happen again? I wish I could promise you that, but, but here again, you never know. But in this, in this case, what we are recommending, they're calling a service that is called a Positive Pay Maintenance Program. That is the program or a service that is provided by Flagstar Bank. And what it does is it protects us against fraudulent vendor check and being counterfeited and then presented and cashed by a Flagstar Bank, say, for example. And as the memorandum that's put together by our director says, our finance director indicates, the, the way this program works is, is very simple. It's whenever a vendor check is issued by the city, the city then sends an electronic list of the checks that are paid to Flagstar. So that when a check is presented to Flagstar for payment, Flagstar will first check this electronic listing to make sure that the vendor is, is on the list and he's going to be paid, and then issue payment to the vendor if it's found on the listing. This same process obviously will also occur should the check be presented at another financial institution and then later presented to Flagstar as well. Now, I wish I could say that this is a service, that there will be no fee, there's no cost. There is, but we think that it is still, it is a good fee. I believe that we will see an increase of about twenty-five, twenty-five dollars more for, for this, for this, this service. But we definitely think that it is important and that it, we will protect us from, from this, from the situation. So this amendment will increase our monthly banking fee of twenty-five dollars per month, and the city will utilize the Positive Pay Maintenance Service twice per month. At least, that's what we estimate. So our current bank service fee will be about two hundred dollars a month, which is about a twelve-point-five percent increase in fees. Now, with us this evening is our representative from Flagstar. She is the Vice President of Consumer Relations. Her name is Kim Gothe. I'm sure you recognize her. She's been at several council meetings with us. So, Kim, welcome again. Thank you very much for your time. I sincerely appreciate it. We enjoy working with Flagstar. You all doing an excellent job for us as well. Would you, obviously, council, if you have any questions, Ms. Gothe will be happy to answer any questions that you may, you may have. Kim, if there's anything else that I've left out or you would like to say?
Oh, yeah. You covered it well.
Okay, good.
She described the service just as it works, and it would be with any check that comes in, whether it comes through our banking centers or it comes from any other bank to be cashed on your account from us, we would return it. Now, if an item comes in and it's not on the list that we've received from the city, we will notify via the online system that the finance office has. They'll check the exceptions and tell us, yeah, you know, this one didn't get on the file because it was a manual issue or something like that. And then we'll pay it or return it based on, you know, the direction of the finance office. If we don't hear back from the city for some reason or other, we'll try to reach out and call. But if we don't, we automatically return the check. So there's not a chance of one getting through that, that shouldn't be on there. So it is, it's something that a lot of communities, it's been, the service has been out there for a long time, but a lot of the communities, we're just seeing a lot more fraud out there now. And closing the account doesn't often take care of it, because as soon as another check goes out into the system, the account number's out there again. And someone, you know, people are cashing them at party stores and, and anywhere, and they just pick up the account number and can create a check as quickly as, as Jane said, on a copier, unfortunately. And our teller did. Yeah, she saw it, but the person was up out of the area. It was questionable. And then the signature was the previous clerk after the time we had removed it. So we were able to catch the other one came through. We would have backed it, though, if there hadn't been insurance to cover it. So the city didn't take any losses on it. So, but three times, that's what David and I were talking, I go, three times a chart. Hopefully, another, just get a gut feel that this is a second one that's happened. We don't want a third one to come through.
Very good. Are there any questions? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for coming out tonight and helping explain the program to us. Not so much a question, but more of a, a comment. And I'm, I will be in, in favor of this tonight. It seems to make all the sense to us here. It's, it's most unfortunate that we find ourselves in these times that folks that are either hard-pressed or for whatever reason they choose to, to pursue that form of income. And I think that, you know, having a program like this in place makes a lot of sense. I know as, as individuals, we, we look to our institutions to kind of help us on certain occasions, and especially when I think of like credit cards or, you know, debit cards, those kinds of things, to have that activity monitored. And they give you the, the courtesy call to say, hey, we noticed this activity in, in, in Florida, and have you been there? And is this, is this okay? You know, that kind of stuff, I think, is a really good idea. And to see that our city is bringing that on as well can, can definitely help us, because it's, it's important to know whose money we're, we're talking about here. And to have these protections in place makes a, makes a, a lot of sense. So, so thank you for what you're doing. Thanks to, you and your staff for helping catch those other two attempts.
And we did.
And, and here we are. So again, thank you.
And you know what? I also never want to forget to thank you for the continuous relationship, because we've dealt, I've been with Flagstar now for eight years, and we've been handling the banking for that amount of time and a little bit more than that. So I really, we really appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys and the opportunity to come here, you know, every now and then to bother you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. I'd like to say anything we can do to strengthen internal controls is, is positive. As a former internal controls auditor, you know, there's, there's a lot of things, a lot of people out there trying to get things illegally, and anything we can do to strengthen that is, is a great idea.
Very good. Well, thank you for coming and
Thank you.
Thank you for maintaining the great relationship we have with your bank. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number four?
Motion Number M one dash twelve, Matter of Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement with George Beatty of Detail Plumbing Service to Provide Plumbing Inspection Services.
Is there a motion to approve M one twelve?
Motion to approve M one twelve.
Has been moved by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa?
Council, you may recall a gentleman by the name of Dan Murray. He was our, he was both our plumbing and mechanical inspector.
Ms. Prince, would you please read item number four?
Motion number M-1-12, matter of authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with George Beatty of Detail Plumbing Service to provide plumbing inspection services.
Is there a motion to approve M-112?
Motion to approve M-112.
Has been moved by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Sessa.
Council, you may recall a gentleman by the name of Dan Murray. He was our, he was both our plumbing and mechanical inspector for, oh goodness, for many, many, many years since I've been here. And, well, recently he decided to retire. And since that time, we have been looking for ways to either replace him or look at other solutions to help us address the inspections. And as presented in the memorandum that was put together by our city planner, Ms. Vanson, we looked at several proposals from, even from some communities to help us examine this issue. Unfortunately, in reviewing the three different proposals that we received, it seemed that it would be more costly for us to look at them. In some of them, they looked at raising our fees just a little more than what we were going towards. And in others, they wanted us to completely change our procedures, our policies, so that it would be very similar to what their communities were looking at. So after careful review of each of the proposals, we went on to ask for individuals to submit applications and again, go back to the very similar process that we had, which at least for us at this point in time, makes a little sense. And in this case, we are recommending this individual for your consideration. This contract was put together with our city planner, together with our city attorney, and he has reviewed it and we are recommending it for you. My understanding is that it can be terminated should we not be pleased with this contract and we feel that the inspector is not doing a good job within, if not immediate, within a few days, his contract can be terminated. Within seven days, I knew you were going to say that, yes, seven days. So it will be prompt. But this individual, we have, we have looked at his application and I'm pleased to report that he is a plumbing inspector for the cities of Warren and Bloomfield Hills since 2006. And according to our city planner, we feel that this individual comes well recommended and we think that he should be able to do a good job for us. So it is, it is our recommendation that you consider this individual. And if you have any questions, both myself and Ms. Vanson and Mr. Schneider are here to respond. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Ms. Plaid Onson?
I'm not sure if this is, oh, I see Amy coming to the microphone just in case. I guess my only question is with it being a single person, and I think it notes in the contract specifically for the services of George only, do you have any concerns with not having backup and causing any sort of delays if he's on vacation or ill or?
Actually, item number five would be the backup. And my next step is to look at finding backup, having a substitute inspector for mechanical as well as building inspection, because that is something Mr. Murray, Mr. Murray, for whatever reason, was very resistant to having a substitute. Our electrical inspector does have a substitute, Cecil Klein, when he's on vacation, has Tim Blake do his inspections and we have, the city has contracts with both of those gentlemen. Dan Murray was registered to building inspections as well as plumbing and mechanical, so, and Dan never went on vacation. So, and he never wanted a substitute. So when he, when Dwayne went on vacation, our building official, Dan was his substitute for rough inspections and things like that, things that if it waited, we're going to cause problems with a construction project. So my next step, once we get this done, hopefully, fingers crossed, is to move on and get a substitute mechanical and a substitute building inspector to have on call.
Okay, great, thank you.
If I may follow along that same line of reasoning. So Mr. Beatty then, on a given day, could not elect to send a substitute for himself?
No, no. He would not be able to.
That is precluded specifically?
Correct. And, yes, it is for him and him alone. That was something with Mr. Murray. He had wanted to have somebody work with him and, you know, that's not how the contract's ever been written, it's just for that person.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Beatty is here. I asked him to come so you can just, he can just wave. I said he wouldn't have to speak. I thought you guys would like to actually see a name and a face.
Well, we thank you, Mr. Beatty, for coming out this evening and being with us. No questions for Mr. Beatty? Very good. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Prince, would you please read item number five?
Motion number M-2-12, matter of authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Michael Monson to provide mechanical inspection services.
Is there a motion to approve M-212?
Motion to approve.
Has been, the motion has been made by Councilmember Plaid Onson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Ms. Sessa.
Council, again, now this time we're looking at the mechanical inspector. And in this case, Ms. Vanson has done the review and this individual is also the mechanical inspector for the cities of Clausen and Lethrop Village, and he has been registered with the state of Michigan since 2001. He does come well recommended and we are both in concurrence to recommend this individual to the city council. We'd be happy to answer any questions, Your Honor.
Are there any questions? Mayor Protem Turbrack?
I guess this applies to both, Ms. Vanson. With these inspectors and working in various other municipalities, what is their availability? Are there certain days that we're going to handle inspections now?
With Mr. Murray, just since he was here for so long, he was available Monday through Friday, but he worked for many, many cities and was, he did not have established office hours similar to our building official, our electrical inspector. With these individuals, based upon the fact that we've split up the work, Mr. Beatty will be available to do plumbing inspections Monday through Thursday. If it is a sewer inspection or something where the hole is going to be left all weekend long, he is available on Fridays. So, and that will be in the mornings. And Mr. Monson, because it's mechanical, similar to our electrical inspector, he will be here on Monday and Wednesdays. And it'll be a late morning, early afternoon because he is fitting us in with the other inspections that he has to do with the other cities.
Thank you. Sure. Thank you. Any other question? Just a question on how much these people are paid. They're getting seven tenths of the money for the permit.
We're keeping it the same as we had, this is similar to what our, what Mr. Murray made as well as what Mr. Klein and Mr. Blake make now. It's 70% of the permit fee and then there is an hourly rate for plan review. So we are keeping that consistent. As I said in my memorandum, the feeling was I had gotten some, not only from these gentlemen, but other gentlemen, but other people that had looked at the, or looked at possibly doing the work, that they felt that our fees were very low. I think that, and I had responded to other folks, that I did not think that this body would be interested in really greatly raising rates. It's one thing to look at tweaking or cleaning up some fees, but I did not think that the time was right. And like I had said in my memorandum, the other inspectors, the inspectors that are before you this evening concurred with that. They understand that timing is very difficult and you don't want to price things so high that people go under the radar and they're doing work without permits. You want to make sure things are inspected and that things are safe, which is the whole point of the permit system.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Monson is here this evening as well.
Mr. Monson.
Mr. Monson. I didn't have a chance to talk to him, but I would promise that he doesn't have to speak as well if he doesn't want to. And Mr. Monson is a registered plumbing and mechanical inspector.
Excellent. Unless you want to speak. Yep.
If you ask me a question, I'll answer it.
I don't think anybody has. Are there any questions? I think we're generally pleased that you're here and we're thankful that both of you came this evening and were available for questions should they arise. Thank you. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-212?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
And O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Prince, would you please call item number six on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-3-12, matter of adapting a resolution establishing a fund designated to creating and publishing a hardcover book of the history of the city of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R-312?
Yes, there is, Your Honor. A motion to approve R-312.
It has been moved by Councilmember Baker.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekko. Ms. Sessa.
Council, you know, this matter was brought to my attention by our former mayor, Marilyn Stephan, and who wanted to do something in order to help encourage or further encourage the historical committee to, I guess, come up with some dollars, do some fundraising and eventually her, one of her dreams is to someday see a hardcover book that shows the history of Berkeley. I see Sue Richardson out there and I know how much she wants that as well. And so does our council member Baker as well. This is something that I think it's a big dream of ours to see that. And we've had a lot of people wanting a historical book about the city of Berkeley. I remember when we did a small, that the city, my assistant had done a book together with assistance from the historical commission and just on history of the city of Berkeley. And I mean, those things literally went off the shelf. I mean, they sold very, very quickly, so much so that we had to try to find one just to keep it in the historical museum, just to find one. So there are people that are very much interested. I know that people stop right there at city hall or in our hallways and they're always looking at the pictures and asking questions about historical significance of those pictures. So there's a lot of people out there in our city that are interested in doing this. So, anyway, so, long story, our former mayor has asked us to, or is donating $400 to begin this fund and there is a sunset date for this fund. So you, historical commission here, you do have a deadline, although I think it's one that is doable. She's hoping that by June 30th, 2015, that this is something that the historical commission should be able to achieve by then. Now, if for whatever reason, the historical commission isn't able to do so, then she's asking that these dollars be sent to the library and that they be used to purchase library books for the city library. So I suppose this is her way of creating incentive and hoping that someday we will have a hardbook cover that depicts the history of the city of Berkeley. And we are recommending this, Your Honor. I'd be happy to answer any questions and perhaps maybe Councilman Baker as well can encourage members of the historical society to do that, or historical commission. And then, and Ms. Richards, would you like to say something, Sue Richardson?
We're delighted, and I can speak on behalf of the committee. We're having our monthly meeting on Sunday and I'm going to present them with this news and I'm sure they'll be delighted. And I've already spoken with Carol Ring, who is the committee's historian and has been working on that history. And so she, I conveyed the news to her, she was very excited to hear that. So we hope that we will be able to produce something very soon. And to add to what you were saying about that brief history, we have, we, the committee reprinted it and so copies of that are now on sale at both the library and city hall. And I want to also add, I hope Marilyn Stephan is watching this because we hope that at some point we can entice her to become a member of the committee. I guess I'm sure that her input will be just as valuable as her very generous financial contribution.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? Can we add the amount of the gift into section one? It's not there and we need to have that.
We need to have, is that okay with the maker of the motion?
Yes, it is.
And with the second of the motion?
Yes, it is.
Thank you both.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask a question regarding this account. Is it possible then for residents, members of the community who have an interest in preserving our history to make donations into that same account?
Certainly.
In the event that they make such donations, then my question for the chair of the historical commission is, would it be possible that such people be recognized in any publication of the history?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So that their contribution, not their actual contribution, but that they contributed?
Right, oh, absolutely. I think that would be only appropriate.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
And if they make a contribution in this regard, it's tax deductible as long as the check is made payable to the city of Berkeley and then the purpose is stated as to what they want the money to, you know, to go for, it is a tax deductible contribution.
Excellent, excellent. Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank our former mayor, Marilyn Stephan, for the generosity of this and to help not only the committee, but in worst case, and I use that in most extreme quotes because it's actually a great case, this would go to the public library to help with books there. So either way, it's a win for the city, it's a win for education, a win for our community as we seek to move forward. And ideally, we would be able to apply this to the publication of the hardcover book, which has been pointed out would complement the photo history, which has been reprinted. This wouldn't be the same material just in hardcover. This would be narrative, text-based, of course, with pictures and illustrations as well. The current manual that's available is, celebrates the photo history of the city. So this would complement that very nicely. And I'd like to thank the chair for coming out tonight and being with us and for all your leadership that you do throughout the year and the many events that the historical committee is participating in. And here's to another great adventure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stedman?
I was wondering if there was any established way that you have, is it just going to be by soliciting donations? Have you thought about fundraisers? How are you going to get the word out that you are accepting donations?
We can place this on our cable station, we can, on our website, we can start there. Let our residents know that this is available and then hopefully the press will pick up a little and help us as well to spread the words. We appreciate it.
And do we know how much it costs to publish a book?
It, no, that is, Sue, I don't know, you're best.
No, we haven't, until we have a draft in place, it's difficult to get any kind of bids because we don't know what the actual size of, you know, of course photographs will add to the cost. But I was just going to add to what you said about putting something on the cable station about donations. We're also looking for photographs, so if anybody has photographs, we can scan them and return them, but those would be very useful. So we encourage all the residents to look around in their closets and attics and basements and if they have any photographs that depict the early history of Berkeley, we would very much appreciate them.
Ms. Richardson, am I correct that a sizable amount of this research has already been compiled?
That is correct, yes.
So it is essentially a matter of committing it to writing?
Yes. Well, a lot of it has been written, so it's going to have to be edited and fine tuned.
So we're quite a ways down the path here?
Yes, yes.
Very good.
Very exciting.
It is. Ms. Sessa?
The only thing I'd like to also add for residents out there, you know, I mentioned here in our hallway, you know, we have some historical photographs that people can view. But if you go to one of our local restaurants, Bagger Days, you can see these gigantic pictures of historical pictures and they, again, they worked with Ms. Ring to put these pictures within their, within the restaurant. And I know sometimes when you're sitting there enjoying a meal or whatever, you can actually feel that you're right in old downtown Berkeley as you look at these huge pictures. So if anybody's interested in looking at some of these, I know Bagger Days will like that. But it is, it's a place that took that initiative to show the wonderful history of our city. Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Thank you, Ms. Richardson, and thank you to the historical commission for all you do. This is an important undertaking and special thanks to Mayor Stephan for putting in the seed money to get this thing moving along. I think it will be... I think it will be a great thing in our, in our community to preserve our history and make it available to the next generations. We might consider getting an intern from one of the local universities who are working on a master's degree, for example, in history or in English, that might be willing, by way of an internship, to participate in a process like this. It would be instructive for them, and it would be helpful for us. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R. 1312?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ian O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Prince, would you please call item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R. 4-12, matter of adapting resolution authorizing budget amendments for the 2011-2012 fiscal year.
Is there a motion to approve R. 412?
Motion to approve?
Has been moved by Mayor Protam Turbrak.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekko. Ms. Sessa.
Because, as you know, in order for us to make sure that our budget is in tune with all the changes that we make, you know, the budget is something that changes on a regular basis, we also like to make sure that these figures are reflected correctly in our budget. So, in accordance with Public Act 2 of 1968 as amended, these budget adjustments are done in accordance with state law. Now, so that you know exactly what they are, I will ask our Finance Director, Mr. David Sabuda, to just simply go over them and explain what each of these amendments will be doing and what impact they will have on our budget. Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Madam Manager. Good evening again, Mayor and councilmembers. You have eight amendments before you this evening. Two of them are applicable to the general fund, approximately $39,800 of new spending. The five of the amendments are special revenue funds, approximately $118,000 in new spending, and one is the enterprise fund, approximately $80,000 in new revenues coming into the enterprise fund. Item A is a special revenue fund, major street fund. We're asking to spend an additional $150,000. This would be the city's contribution. We're partnering with the Downtown Development Authority to fix the intersection at 12 Mile and Coolidge, and this would be the major street fund seed money to fix the intersection, Item B is the, and before I go to item B, the Downtown Development Authority will be considering their amendment at their meeting next week, okay? And then we'll see their amendment in February. Yes?
This is to repair, not fix?
Fix.
Or just to fix?
To redo the reconstruction.
Good.
Do the reconstruction.
Very good, nice point.
Okay, item B, solid waste fund. There is no new spending here. Basically, what has happened is with our new DPW director, he's done a very nice job in this area, he has saved $23,000 for the city, and we did a lot of the work in-house, so some of our in-house costs went up, but some of our vendor costs have gone down, and this amendment reflects that. No new spending, and we've saved approximately $23,000. Okay. Item C, the arena fund. Right now, we, our major contractor there had originally, had originally contracted for approximately 39 hours' worth of ice a week. That did not come to fruition. It dropped by about 33 percent, or a reduction of 13 hours per week, which means that we are not going to see $80,000 of revenue at the arena. So, what we traditionally do here is we split shortfalls at the arena between the general fund and the recreation revolving fund. $40,000 will come from each of the two funds, and the revenues will come into the arena fund in order to ensure that we do not have a fund balance deficit as long as expenditures meet what we've budgeted for the year.
Councilmember Turbrak?
You're talking about this person that's contractor, you said they reduced by 33 percent. Did they sign a contract for the full amount?
Initially, they did.
And then they all of a sudden just said?
They said, sorry.
We changed it on you?
That is correct.
And they signed a contract.
And then they signed a second contract.
Who's getting stuck with the bill?
Well, right now, the general fund and the recreation revolving fund.
Okay.
So, at the end of the day, we're looking to bring in $80,000 so that we do not exceed expenses over revenues. We want revenues to meet expenses.
Thank you. You're welcome. Ms. Sabuda?
Yes, sir.
Going forward, then, what is it that we're doing to prevent a recurrence of another $80,000 in next year's budget?
Good question. I can certainly tell you that Mr. Price and Mr. Colwell are out right now beating the bushes for customers to utilize the ice that was not sold. I can certainly tell you, we have also worked with independent promoters to bring in tournaments to the rink on a weekend basis that will generate, we have one in the works right now that could generate between $6,000 and $8,000 that will utilize ice time that was not sold, so that is definitely a plus. So, we're out there looking for customers for our ice time continually, and it's amazing how many people I run into who are from Berkeley who have hockey teams, and I see them all over the Down River area, and we talk, and we make sure that we say, hey, if you need extra ice, please consider Berkeley. And they're very surprised to hear that we have ice available, and they say, sure, we'll take it into consideration when they, when they set their ice for the next year or for this year, if they continue to work through the playoff season.
One second, Ms. Sabuda. I've got one last question.
Sure, sure, sure.
I just want all the residents to understand that the situation that's happening right now with the ice arena, where we're finding ourselves in this hole, is not the fault of the city or all the hard work that Tom Colwell and Kevin and all the people at Parks and Rec have done. They did their job, they got a signed contract, and the person that signed the contract didn't fulfill the terms and stuck the city with the bill. I want all the residents to be very clear on how that worked. It's not the fault of the city, but we are the ones who are stuck holding the bill.
Correct.
Correct.
May I continue?
Thank you, yes.
Sorry.
No, no, it's great.
Thank you.
Item D, Recreation Revolving Fund, this is a special revenue fund, $8,300. Basically, what this item is, is we are carrying forward appropriation that was not spent in 10-11 into 11-12. This is the tail end of the tennis court project that went on in 10-11, and we are carrying forward those $8,300 into the new fiscal year. And obviously, that would increase spending, because we've got the final, the final dollars for that project in 11-12. Item E, Rec Revolving Fund, again, the $40,000. Here is the commitment from the Rec Revolving Fund to go into the, to transfer the dollars into the arena fund for $40,000. And then item F is the general fund commitment of the $40,000. You can see the expenditures there for 40 apiece, and again, that's going into the arena fund. Item G, special, I'm sorry, it's a special revenue fund, the senior recreation revolving fund. All we're doing here, there's no increase or decrease in expenses. We are moving dollars where we had not anticipated spending, and we know where we're not spending any dollars in a certain area, so we're just moving dollars from one line item to the next, so that we stay in compliance with state law. The last item, item H, is, you'll see on the liability and vehicle insurance. We received our invoice from our general liability vendor, and we received a reduction. Our bill came down this year, so what we're doing here is we are reducing our appropriation for various general liability and vehicle insurance commitments that we had set up back in July, and the bill came lower. So, that's why we have so many credits, and where we have, where we think we're going to have a problem, or we've experienced a problem on a line item, we have, we're moving those savings over into those line items that have increased. I will say that the largest piece that did go up, overall, the liability insurance came down, but the professional, the police professional liability jumped up, and that's why you see the $8,000 increase in the liability insurance at the PD. But my understanding is that for our, for the insurance companies, for all their clients, that piece jumped up, because we asked about that, and that's, the insurance carrier that they get the insurance from, they drove that piece up. At the end of the day, you can see that we have a net reduction of $201 savings to the general fund. And, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, that concludes the presentation. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to entertain those questions. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Sabuda? Councilmember Plaid Onson?
Wanted to go back a little bit to the first page I saw, which frightened me enough to seriously highlight it. We kind of breezed over it, and I wanted to sort of have a chance to talk about what this $150,000 means and where this came about. So, I'm sure somebody can do a better job than me in explaining this, but the idea for the viewers is that there was a joint session between Planning Commission, DDA, and council to discuss many items within the city, and one of the items that came up was the intersection at 12 Mile and Coolidge. And after great, 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 great discussion, there was a sort of a general notion to move forward with the idea of replacing what's there. And so, what we're looking at now is a certain amount, $150,000, from the city towards the overall costs, and a similar, though perhaps greater, I'm looking to my liaison over here, dollar amount from the DDA to cover the balance of that. The idea is that they will be investigating the possibility of concrete alone or concrete with stamped crosswalks, something similar to what you're seeing at 11 Mile and Coolidge, something that's a little less maintenance. So, I know that $150,000, we kind of went right by, so I just wanted to sort of address what was happening there. So, that's all, thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sabuda.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, basically, the total estimated project cost for the intersection is $375,000. The city's piece would be 40 percent of that, or $150,000, which you're seeing tonight, and the Downtown Development Authority would contribute 60 percent of the cost, or $225,000. And that's based upon the current engineer's estimate from Hubler, Roth &amp; Clark, which was put in writing back in July of 2011 and discussed at the last DDA meeting. Now, bids will go out soon, and that dollar value could go up, go down, depending on the bid, but at the end of the day, that's what we have, that's the best number we have to work with today.
Ms. Sessa?
Counsel, also, you may recall that the DDA did pass a motion to approve to do this. What they are looking at the next meeting is to discuss the costs, but the motion to replace the brick intersection was approved by the DDA.
Ms. Plaid Onson?
I just had a follow-up question. I'm going to look in this direction and hope that you can help me. What does this $150,000 do to the budget? Is this coming out of the overall general fund balance? How is this working in?
That's a good question. These dollars are coming from our major street fund. It is coming from our fund balance. I guess, well, obviously, this means that we will have less dollars to make some repairs to our major roads, but it is from our fund balance, and we can afford to do this, at least right now. We will have to take a look very carefully in terms of what we're going to plan for the future, in terms of our future improvements that are needed for our major road. So, it will, it will have an impact in the future on our major road, street improvement programs.
Can you clarify for the viewers which roads are major roads, just so they can?
Let's see, David, perhaps you might do a better job. I mean, I would just say simply, these are roads that are, when I say major roads, streets where you'll see more cars on them, more vehicles on that, where you'll see, like, for example, Coolidge would be a major road, 12 Mile would be another major road, just to give an example. A local road would be more like a residential type of road, so I guess a major road would be our business road, where you'll see more, more traffic on there.
If I may add, basically, the major and local street fund, funds, they're funded by the gas taxes. So, when people pull up to the pump and they pay, we get a percentage of that back through formula based upon population and the number of mile of road inside of your town. So, that's how these two funds become funded. We have to report to the state of Michigan. It's a very, as you know, we have a very strict reporting process when it comes to gas taxes, and major and local streets are pre-designated by the state in cooperation with the local government. So, we know how many miles of major street and local street we have. I want to say we have 15 and a half miles worth of major street and around 40 miles of local street. So, the gas taxes are split that way, depending on how much is in the pot among the entire state of Michigan, and that's where we derive our funding for these types of projects.
Ms. Sessa?
Counsel, the other thing that I'd like for the public to know, when we held, when the council, the Planning Commission, and the DDA, when we had a work session to discuss, this was just one of the, one of the issues that was addressed, but when we addressed this issue, the word safety was a big concern. Obviously, this is, this is an important project, and, but safety was a big concern that we had on that. It's a lot of money, as you say, and, but, but when you look at everything that's out there, safety is important, obviously, and the Planning Commission, together with the city council and members of the DDA that were there, did direct the city manager to take a look at this and work with the engineers to come up with a plan. And after much discussion from the, from the DDA, they felt that this was, this was the thing to do, and we'll have to take a look at all our plans and make the appropriate adjustments, but unfortunately, safety, it was the big concern.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to belabor the point, but I do appreciate my colleague bringing this up, so we could have just this light conversation on this, here in the early stages of this phase of the process. As we've discussed, the, that joint session did explore this topic in great detail, and we are still very early in the process, so if we were to approve this tonight, this does not mean that they're going to be in construction over the weekend or anytime soon, right? As was described earlier, there's, the DDA still needs to talk about their side of the funding, the, as was pointed out correctly, the, the structure of the, of the system needs to be finalized, meaning is it just all concrete, or is it concrete, and with the stamped concrete on the crosswalks, as has been described. So, there's still a fair amount of work yet to be done, opportunities to comment and be part of the conversation. The bids still need to go out and then come back in, and proper review, and we'll see all of that good stuff again. So, we're still in the early stages of this, and what we're doing here tonight is just positioning the city's obligations in a way that, when the time comes, we'll be able to execute and move forward. So, plenty more to come. I'm real glad that we did have the opportunity to talk about this a little bit, and now I can have just that much less of an update on my communications at the end. All that in my communications on the DDA updates, so perfect.
Councilmember Stedman?
Yes. You've both mentioned the concrete with the crosswalks, and you've mentioned all concrete. Is there still consideration to all stamped concrete, or is that out of the picture?
I can address that. It was at the meeting, it was discussed to maybe consider all stamped concrete, but they just felt that it just wasn't feasible. There were concerns still, you know, chipping and things of that nature. They just felt that they just develop a simple road, concrete obviously would be best, because they felt it lasted longer, and we're still not sure as to whether or not we'll have stamped crosswalks, because it's, some like it and some don't. So, I guess based on the dollars, maybe that perhaps will make, will be the deciding factor.
Thank you.
So, no stamped concrete for the whole thing. Okay.
Thank you. So, the summary of it all is, we're beginning a process that will result in resolving the problem at 12 and Coolidge, once and for all.
Removing the bricks.
That means removing the bricks. Ms. Prince, please call the roll.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Prince, would you please call item number eight?
Resolution number R. 5-12, matter of adapting a resolution recommending the transfer of ownership of escrow 2011 Resort Class C licensed business located at 56 South Grossebeck Clinton Township, Michigan, 48036, Macomb County, from September Inc. to Caribor LLC, and transfer the location to 27799 Woodward, Berkeley, Michigan, 48072.
Is there a motion to approve R. 512?
Motion to approve?
Has been moved by Councilmember Plaid Onson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Ms. Sessa?
Counsel, this is a procedure that comes before you, and it starts when we receive a notice from the Liquor License Commission and goes to our Public Safety Department, and they review it, and they come back with a recommendation to the city council. And I do know- And I do know that they are recommending this license before you, and to give us a brief overview of exactly what this license will entail, I've asked our deputy chief Public Safety Director, Mr. Bob North, to come before the city council and explain exactly what this process entails and what this license recommendation includes, because I do know that there are some restrictions. Deputy Chief North?
Mr. Mayor, Council, city staff, everyone else out there, this is a process in a liquor license transfer where we are notified of the request for transfer from the state of Michigan. It involves our department, at some point involves building department. It's a very cooperative effort all the way around. In brief, we have conducted the investigation. Mr. Kirk Cutello, one of the owners, we're talking about the Carbar, the old side of the Vincenta Garage. Mr. Cutello is here, we met with him and Mr. Crane, both of whom applied for the license. We had very good discussions over a wide range of topics. We're very pleased to have had the meeting. We have also an agreement that the SDM, or out-the-door sales license, will be restricted to wine only, and we also discussed parking, and at this point in time, after completing our investigation, having had the discussions, we are recommending approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
One more comment, Senator. I know that Mr. Cutello, I spoke with him over the phone this late this afternoon, and I know he'd like to maybe perhaps just give you an update in terms of where this restaurant, the status of this restaurant is at this point in time. Welcome, Mr. Cutello.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Manager, director, clerk, we appreciate it. I'm here today really representing Carbar Inc., which will be DBA Vincenta Garage, and I'm here really on behalf of Casey Crane, my partner in the restaurant, who was courageous enough to buy a historic gas station in Vincenta Garage, and we've been very happy with the help that we've had through this entire process, from your city manager to Planner Anderson and Deputy Chief North and Chief Echlin have all helped us through this process, and we're very appreciative of that with Berkeley. We're excited to have the opportunity to restore, resuscitate, renovate a building that's, means a lot to us, because we're car guys. And we know that this is a very important structure, not just to Berkeley, not just to Detroit, but to the region. I mean, the fact is, is that it's the oldest garage east of the Mississippi, and you just look at how storied this structure is, that we think it's a really rare opportunity to be able to preserve it in the form of a restaurant. And so what we're really doing is preserving the bones of something that is very important, and putting a restaurant in it with as low an impact as possible. And this kind of preservation and repurposing is something familiar to us, because my other two restaurants, which my wife and I own, are in Clarkston, the Clarkson Union, which is in an 1840s church on Main Street, and the Union Woodshop, the 2011 Detroit Free Press Restaurant of the Year, is in a 1920s structure on Main Street also. And so all of the challenges and riddles that these older buildings throw your way are things that we enjoy solving, and we're very fortunate that Vincenta Garage is an incredible building, that's built incredibly well, and we think that when it's all said and done, we're going to have a restaurant in there that we'll be proud of, but more importantly, that Berkeley and the council and your constituents will all be proud of. And we're very excited to have the opportunity. As Deputy Chief North knows, we we want everybody to have our phone numbers if you have any questions. You're not dealing with some chain based out of Phoenix, you're not dealing with some far-off outfit. I mean, we are people with cell phones that are a stone's throw away, and we want to be accountable, and most importantly, we want to give you guys some food and drink that that you're not going to find anywhere else around here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Cutello? Councilmember Plaid-Onson?
It's not really a question. I just wanted to say, yeah, that I'm thrilled to have this restaurant going in, partially because it's walking distance from my house, but I just want to say I really appreciate your investment in Berkeley, and I know that the residents are really excited to have the building preserved. I know there was a bit of fear when it went out through the papers that the garage was closing, and people were wondering what would happen, and I just wanted to say I thought it was great work that you were doing, and thank you.
And I think we're fortunate that Casey Crane purchased it, knowing that he just wanted it to be saved, not knowing how to save it, and that's really why the partnership works out well, is that we think this repurposing is a great way to save any historic structure, especially one as important as Vincenta Garage.
Councilmember Stedman.
I just had a question. It's, your incorporate, your corporation is called Carbar. Is that going to be what the restaurant is called, or the Vincenta Garage, or?
The restaurant will be called, it'll be DBA Vincenta Garage, so really, it is, the exterior, as we see it, is not going to change very much. I mean, that name has such equity, and I could spend 100 years trying to think of a better name for it, not come up with one, so it'll be Vincenta Garage from here on out.
Okay, I'm glad it's not Carbar.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadekko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming out, Mr. Costello. Just out of curiosity, do you have a timeline when you want to open?
We'd like to open around 11 o'clock, Dave. I think these are such difficult undertakings that I think our goal is to have it done in the first quarter, it'll be late first quarter. We have some targets on the horizon with the Detroit Grand Prix coming to town and everything, that we just think that there's some deadlines that we'd like to make, and it's our goal to really kick our contractors and our internal team, we are our own contractors, really, to get this done first quarter, late first quarter.
In time for cruise fest and doing cruise.
This is true, although part of me fears that. I mean, I know that that cruise is an incredible thing, and it's, it poses interesting challenges for businesses, but we think that this has such a, it's such a unique beacon, that we would love to have it ready for cruise.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to also thank you for all that you're doing, not only for the the areas that you've already helped to keep alive in those historic buildings, but also for choosing Berkeley as a as a site for, you know, bringing the, all that you'll be bringing from the restaurant business. And so you mentioned the outside of the building will remain largely intact, the signs, the nostalgic gas pumps and stuff like that, where you still have the "no gas" sign in front of it?
The "no gas" is, I think that's, that comes with the territory.
Okay.
It's almost like the Vincenta Garage is known more for no gas than gas.
So I'm wondering, you know, dietary and intestinal challenges that such a claim will make on a restaurant, so good luck with that, and
You make no front.
And again, thank you for for choosing Berkeley.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you for being here. Thank you for your investment in our city, your confidence in our community, and we welcome you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
And Ms. Prince, please call the roll.
Plaid-Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Ms. Prince, please call Reed Autumn, item number nine.
Motion number M three dash 12, matter of rewarding contract to Apollo Fire Equipment Company in the amount of $31,300 for extrication equipment.
Is there a motion to approve M three 12?
Motion to approve M three 12.
It has been moved by Mayor Protem Turbrak.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekko. Mr. Sessa.
Council, sometime in 2010, we applied for assistance to firefighters' grant through the Department of Homeland Security to replace our aging and obsolete equipment, commonly referred to as the jaws of life. Then, in March of 2011, we were informed that we were awarded this grant. Now, I'm not going to pretend that I know all the ins and outs of how this this mechanism works, so to help me with that, I've asked our, our, now, I'm fire, a fire inspector or fire marshal, there you go, I was looking for your title there, to to bring us up to speed exactly as to how this this is going to work, and then, Council, I will help in addressing exactly what, how these dollars are going to be spent and received and and things of that nature. I do know that our our finance director, at least with, at this point in time, all we are doing is, the city council is approving the acceptance of this grant, and in that case, we will look at, we already get the funds set aside for the revenues portion of it, however, on the expense side, you will see that that item come before you at the next council meeting when we do a budget adjustment, so that we can set aside the expenditure side. So having said all that, I'd like to ask Sergeant Kelly to please explain to us exactly what this equipment is all about, and why it is so important for us. Thank you, Sergeant.
Yeah. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. When we applied for the grant, it's been in kind of an unusual grant sequence. First of all, the the feds got way behind in the whole process, and then I got an email inquiring if we were still interested in the grant, and I thought, I thought that this grant was history, and it wasn't, they were just late, and that's why we got the late notification. But anyway, we subsequently were informed that we we had, in fact, been awarded the grant. When I wrote the grant, we requested a similar equipment package as we currently have, a hydraulic pump, a gasoline-powered hydraulic pump, hoses, spreader, cutter, and and a ram tool. In the meantime, between applying for the grant and receiving notification of the award, Hurst Corporation, one of the major manufacturers of extrication equipment, came out with a new technology, a new product that is self-contained, in that the hydraulic pump and reservoir are part of the tool. So we don't have to have a power unit anymore, we don't have to have hydraulic hoses. It's more expensive, but it's simpler, it takes up less space, you literally grab the tool and go anywhere with it, you're not restricted by the length of hose or distance from the power unit. So I had to make, we decided that this this equipment, we were able to get a demonstration on it, I was able to get the manufacturer to acquire some high-strength steels that are now used in in vehicle construction, and test the equipment on the high-strength steels, where it performed admirably. Then I had to request an amendment to the grant, because once I say I don't need a power unit, they say, okay, minus $5,000. I said, wait a minute, but this stuff costs more. So anyway, I had to file an amendment, the amendment was approved, so we're all set to go. I, it it really is an advancement, I'm, I'm, at one time, there were just a few makes of vehicles that had high-strength steels, and now there are many, because to keep the weight down, but keep the the crashworthiness on par, one of the strategies has been to use these high-strength steels. And the downside from an extrication standpoint is that they are very difficult to cut, and can, they're virtually impossible to cut with our current equipment. So it really is very timely. Not only was our equipment old, but it had also is bordering on on being obsolete. So we were very fortunate to get the grant. Things are falling along, there are little glitches, I had to file an expenditure report for 2009, and you heard correctly, we applied for the grant in 2010, a little glitch in the federal government's computer system. So our our grant officer has been very helpful in in working with me through these little issues, and we're progressing along, we've got our our bid out, ready to to be accepted by you folks tonight, and we move forward, we have a 5% match, and then this equipment is slightly more expensive than we had anticipated, so that's what the the result in the $28,000, or I'm sorry, $2,800 request over the the federal share. And they deposit, they direct deposit that money into our account, once we've notified them that we've made the purchase and whatnot, so.
Very good. Thank you, Sergeant Kelly. Mr. Sessa.
Council, just for clarification purposes, so the audience will know, we're looking at a cost of about 31, 31,300.
Correct.
And we're going to be receiving about $30,000 in, from the grant?
Twenty-eight-five.
Twenty-eight, I'm sorry, 28,000.
The federal share.
Correct. And so then, we will put in the rest, which is about a little over $2,000 as well, 2,800, and so that's what, that is what our match will be, and that's what we are recommending as well. And I know our finance director, again, when the time comes at the next council meeting, he will make the appropriate adjustments, so that so the dollars are are correct, and and our and our budgets are are all set. Deputy Chief North would like to make some further comments?
Yes, of course, Chief and I, of course, concur heartily with Sergeant Kelly, who's done a remarkable amount of work getting this done. It's not easy playing catch-up when you're dealing with a larger government entity, but sometimes these things happen. I also like to thank Mr. Sabuda for his wise counsel in attempting us to move over the last few dollars that we need. One other thing quickly is that this equipment is not simply limited to motor vehicles. The portability of this equipment allows us to use it for forcible entry into structures as well. So it's a multipurpose tool that simply is not restricted to a transportation-type situation. So all in all, it's a great thing, the officers that tested it out are very pleased with it. It's essentially battery-operated, but it also has a battery connection that can run to a power source, should all the batteries all be run down, which we couldn't do, even though we tried with a couple of cars. So it's a good piece of equipment, the the officer, Sergeant Kelly, has done a lot of work on it, and we thank everyone involved, and it's a good idea, we need to have this done.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Blanchard?
I'd like to say we definitely do need this, those of you that were around at the last fire open house, we were using the jaws at a demonstration, and we blew a hose and sprayed oil all over everybody, and it was not very pleasant, so that connection part will all be eliminated with this new system, so it's it's a great improvement over what we've got now.
Yeah, good comment. The hydraulic hoses were kind of the weak link in the old system, and and the highest and virtually only maintenance cost to speak of, and they're eliminated, so that's a huge plus in that regard.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Baker? Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to you and the and the team for all of your hard work in making this happen. It sounds like a terrific bargain to me, especially hearing the the maintenance issues are are virtually diminished with this. I see this as, you know, $2,800 for some fantastic equipment that's going to not only service us better, and it's intended, it's, you know, primary design, but also with the supplemental usage options as well, and and here's to hoping the only time we need this thing is at the next fire safety awareness, so. So again, thank you for for pursuing this and for helping explain to us the the benefit that we'll we'll have and hopefully never need with this kind of equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Prince, please call the roll.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid-Onson?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, we come to the communications portion of the meeting, and I believe the Mayor Protem Turbrak is first up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just another update, I mentioned last meeting that our second annual Winter Fest is coming up, you'll get it today, and you'll get it one more time. No, you won't, because, you're gonna get it now, so pay attention. You're lucky, because I have the full flyer here. Saturday, January 28th, beginning at 10:00 a.m., Berkeley Second Annual Winter Fest. Fun and exciting activities for the entire family, such as a craft show, a winter petting farm, snowman building contests, chili cook-off, recycling and fire safety demonstrations, children's crafts and activities, broom ball tournament, kickball tournament, hopefully we'll have snow for those, SCA medieval armored combat demonstration, bonfire with smores, turkey bowling, Berkeley high hockey, open skating, and snowshoeing, and much, much more. You become a sponsor volunteer at these events, and you get, well, everybody does, you get free admission, everybody comes in for free, has a great time. Last year, the first one was a tremendous day, the Parks and Recreation, whole department really, really put in a lot of time and effort into this event, and I can only hope that this event is as successful, and I really do hope that the Winter Fest actually does have some winter-type kind of weather associated with it, not this 50-degree January nonsense that we have been dealing with. Hopefully, snow and snowballs and snowshoeing. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turbrak. Councilmember Plaid-Onson?
I have nothing, except I hope the winter weather doesn't arrive. So, thank you.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to congratulate the new school board members who were sworn in tonight, Paul Allison, who has been re-sworn in, along with Mitchell Moses and Ron Justice, they were kind enough to come to our meeting when we were sworn in, unfortunately, we had meetings at the same time. Also, this Sunday, when you look out in the audience... Also, this Sunday, when you look out in the audience at our council meetings, there's always one face there. Very, very rare you don't see that person at a council meeting or at city events. And I just want to wish a very special birthday this Sunday to a very special person, and that's Josephine Brewer. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Abbreviated comments tonight. Happy 2012, everybody. Here's to another exciting year. Lots in store for us. As was mentioned, the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority, DDA, meeting was going to be this week. It's next week now, Wednesday, the 18th. And the agenda has been discussed. And was also an earlier item tonight about the, the Vincento Garage. There's, it's not only a landmark here in our town and along the Woodward corridor, it's getting a national and hopefully international visibility in, on television. There's a, you may have heard or seen a program called Auto Week's Vincento Garage. It premiered last week's Tuesday. The next episode is this week's Tuesday or tomorrow, for those of us watching this in real time. And it's on, let's see, the Discovery Channel's Velocity Channel, Velocity Network, at 8:30. And this upcoming episode tomorrow is scheduled to focus on the Dream Cruise, and will spotlight this particular location among the, its areas of focus, including, you know, the passion for automobiles and the, and vehicular life. So if you get a chance to check out Auto Week's Vincento's Garage, I strongly recommend it. Just a quick comment on, back to the DDA for just a second. I was just thinking about an article from, The Patch had covered this recently on December 26th, as a matter of fact. And there was a poll about the, the desires of the folks. And it's non-scientific, because anybody can go and click on the button and all that stuff. But, but so far, 76% of the votes are in favor of the stamped concrete, like we have at 11 Mile, as opposed to just the plain. So I'm, I'm sure that the DDA will be taking that into consideration as, as they deliberate on that. So, anyway, moving on. It was Saint Augustine who once said, patience is the companion of wisdom. That was Saint Augustine who said, patience is the companion of wisdom. And so for those of us that have a lot of patience, we certainly have been seeing a lot of things going on with the, with the mass transit conversations these days. Those of you who follow such things know there's some news again last week, last Friday. The off-again, on-again Woodward light rail project has been revived, or if anything, it's gone back to the future in that the original proposal from the M-1 consortium for the downtown loop, the 3.4-mile light rail system is, now has a second chance. They have 90 days to put together a feasibility plan of how that might work and be sustainable long-term. That's exciting for those of us who are interested in, in that kind of technology in the form of getting from point A to point B to go about doing whatever it is we wanted to do in the first place. And it also has implications for those of us who are working on the broader regional system, again, including us here in Berkeley, in Oakland County. So as we see how that project unfolds and moves forward, we'll certainly be keeping everybody posted. As you know, we're, we're shifting our focus slightly to focus a little bit more on the, on the rolling rapid transit, they call it, or a bus rapid transit, a form of system for a broader regional system. We have another meeting with the FTA again tomorrow, so we'll keep folks posted on how that proceeds. And finally, I just want to thank everybody who has reached out to me with questions and comments and ideas and wanting to help be a part of that project. It's, it's again, great to see us, us as a region coming together to focus on quality of life for, for us all and economic development so businesses like the Vincento Garage and others can have more patrons come and, and enjoy these establishments and, and, and help be a part of our community. So, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Sessa?
Counselor, I'll be very brief. I, again, want to wish everybody a happy new year. I can't believe it's going to be 2012, so happy new year to everybody out there in Berkeley. Wish everybody a prosperous and safe and healthy new year, so happy new year. And then lastly, I just simply, again, want to thank a few people. In particular, Sergeant Kelly for his work on this grant. I know that that took a lot. And it's employees like these that are out there looking for grants that, that helped the city to help us, you know, within our, stay within our budgetary constraints. And I sincerely appreciate his work. I know that's, it's, it's difficult, and it's difficult to get these types of grants. I know our city planner as well has been successful in, in our grants, so forth, and things of that nature. So thank you both. And then also, I'd like to express my sincerest appreciation to Councilman Baker for, for his help in, in providing some leadership training to our executive staff members. It was excellent. And I know that we're still talking about it, and we really truly appreciate your time. I know that you took this on your own to do this. So thank you so much for, for taking your own personal time to meet with us and to just help us, I think, facilitate the, the leadership process. So thank you very much, Your Honor. We, we really appreciate it. Thank you so much. And thank you for all the work that you've been doing on the transportation issue. I know that that's going to be so key. I'm very excited about that. Our city planner also, Ms. Amy Vanson's going to be working with you on that. So as you said, this type of project will have a big impact on, on the future of, of our, of our region. So thank you very much. And then also, I personally want to just simply wish again to Josephine out there a very, very happy, happy, happy birthday. You know, Josephine, I don't know what I, what we'd do without you. And we met when I first started working with the city of Berkeley. And we worked together on the Citizens Committee as to where we wanted. And I know Mayor O'Dwyer as well. That's one of the first times I met him. And again, this is all your time, personal time, and, and your love for this great city. So happy birthday, Josephine, and thank you so much for everything you do. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Sabuda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have just a couple of, a couple of comments. I have made the assignments for the liaison roles for members of the city council. And I'll just run down to these so that the, the public will know each one. Mayor Protem Turbrack is assigned to Parks and Recreation Committee. Councilmember Baker to the Downtown Development Authority and the Historical Committee. Councilmember Platt Onson, the Environmental Committee, Planning Commission, and the Tree Board. You got, you got three of them. Councilmember Stedman, the Berkeley Library Board and the Beautification Committee and the Communications Committee. You also got three. Councilmember Kadekell, Cruze Fest Committee and the Zoning Board of Appeals. And Councilmember Blanchard, the Berkeley Chamber of Commerce. So these are the assignments for the members of council. It is important to the communication patterns and the communication flows in the, in the city that we communicate effectively with these varying committees to maximize good decisions all the way around. And with that, Ms. Prince, would you please call the work session item?
A multimodal transportation plan amendment in the manner of discussing the draft multimodal transportation plan amendment to the master plan.
Mr. Sessa?
Counselor, just to begin this conversation, I know that our city planner has put together a very, very good memorandum on this issue. I know that we also have members of the Planning Commission with us this evening as well. The chair, David Barnett, is here. And I think there's some other members as well of our Planning Commission. I'm not going to name everybody here. But I know they will assist Ms. Vanson in helping address any questions they may have. So commissioners, thank you for your time. Again, very basically, just to give you a very brief introduction, I'll turn it over to Ms. Vanson so she can elaborate further on this issue. You, councilmen, may recall that back in October of 2010, you approved Resolution 4810, and you gave the directive to the Planning Commission to begin preparing a master plan amendment to include an expanded section on the multimodal transportation in accordance with the Planning Enabling, Enabling Act. Since that time, the Planning Commission has met with, with many, many groups to discuss needed improvements. And I know that our state law provides that the Planning Commission is the only body that is responsible for adopting a master plan or a master plan amendment. However, it is the city council's responsibility to implement the plan if it sees fit. Obviously, this plan needs to be very realistic, and we need to make sure that all the parties that are involved can implement it. And more importantly, that it is done in the best interest of our community. So I do know that, with that, I'll turn it over to our city planner to discuss this plan in more detail with you and, and address any questions that the city council may have. And as I said, we do have members of the Planning Commission and also our, our Planning Commission chair.
Thank you. Ms. Vanson?
Good evening. Yes, we have the chairperson of the Planning Commission, David Barnett. And we also have Planning Commissioner Mark Smith, or, I'm sorry. Dean Smith and Mark Richardson. I'm sorry, I'm usually very good with names. I apologize. Mark Richardson, he's our newest commissioner here, if you have any questions and to give you some information on the process that the Planning Commission went through. Essentially, the Planning Commission felt that unlike other communities, Berkeley is already very, very multimodal sidewalks. We have a grid system of streets, so there's a lot of alternative ways to get to and from places. We're not all channeled out onto one main road, and we don't have dead-end cul-de-sacs. All the, most of the streets are flanked by sidewalks. So there's a lot of options. It's a very walkable community. So essentially, the Planning Commission, in many ways, it was difficult to figure out how, how can we tweak it to make it even better? And so they met as, as the plan elaborates, the plan amendment elaborates, spoke with a lot of different groups, and had several presentations from different traffic engineers and so forth. And so they have come up with a list of items that vary in cost. Obviously, some are very easy to adopt. It would simply be an ordinance amendment or a policy change, if policy changes and ordinance amendments are considered easy. And then it goes all the way to capital improvements, which would involve more substantial sums of money, special assessments, those sorts of things. The Planning Commission wanted to meet with you before they went ahead and had a public hearing and adopted this. They certainly didn't want to adopt a plan that was going to, as they say, sit on a shelf because the implementers, the city council, was not in favor of it. So they wanted to have a discussion with you ahead of time and see if you had any questions regarding any of the items. And so you, you've had it. I know you've had it for a little while now. I had given it to Ms. Sessa as soon as the Planning Commission gave it its blessing. And I know you, you've had, you've had a couple of copies now, one ahead of time and one in your packet. So if you have questions regarding the recommendations, the Planning Commission, they're shy. They don't want to come up. But, but they'll, they're here as well, so.
Thank you, Ms. Vanson. Are there any immediate reactions, first of all, to the draft? Councilmember Platt Onson?
Well, I guess I've had a little bit longer to review it. I had the pleasure of watching the Planning Commission go through this process thus far as the liaison. So I've gotten to sort of watch it evolve. But I know that they concentrated quite a bit on what was happening with the schools and with the students, as well as biking and walking as a whole, looking at what they could do within the city. But I actually had a process question, which I usually leave to my colleague, but I'm going to jump in here. I know that there's a really solid, in my opinion, list of ideas that are grouped. Some of them are more specific than others. And I was just wondering, do you see this as sort of the, the final document? Maybe this is a general Planning Commission question. As the final document that would be part of the master plan? Do you see this as part of the, part of the process in getting to the complete? I know 2012, you'll be reviewing the master plan as a whole. Could you sort of walk us through the process of what happens with this document and how it's going to be used, et cetera?
My understanding, and again, if any of you want to jump in, the Planning Commission, this, this was going to be the plan amendment that you have before you. This is what they would have the public hearing on and adopt. And it would simply be an amendment to the existing master plan. You are correct. The Planning Commission is required to review the master plan that was adopted in 2007 and just determine whether or not it needs additional amendments or if it's still a satisfactory. So this would be in addition to that, and it would simply be an amendment. And this would be the final document.
Thanks.
Have they given any thought to, instead of making it an amendment, blending it into the master, master plan somehow?
Well, the, the master plan was developed by LSL Planning, and it is an existing document that is, that talks a lot about multimodal transportation, not to this extent, obviously, because it was a very large document, and talked about all kinds of things. So this is a much more focused look at that particular chapter. I think it would be difficult to insert it into the document itself.
And the other, Councilmember Baker?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. And Amy and, and the commissioners, thank you for all your work in pulling this together. I had the opportunity to participate in a few of the sessions and, and greatly enjoyed the process and have utmost respect, not only for the document that we're looking at here, but also the, the work and those who, who did that effort on, on our behalf here. This is, this is great. Thank you. As I'm looking over, for those of you that haven't had the opportunity to see this, it's 10 solid pages of really good thinking. There's visuals, there's pictures, there's steps and bullet points and numbers and things like that that kind of really help walk through the different categories of suggestions and ideas. I think it's, it's, the structure makes a lot of sense, and it's, and it's really good. As I think it, think about some of the areas that this document covers, it talks about, obviously, the businesses, the housing, the, you know, everything from porches and sidewalks, bus shelters, the wayfinding and signs, even the notion of snow removal and bus routes and parking and all that kind of stuff. It, in terms of the kinds of people that would use this thing, it talks about students and bicyclers and pedestrians and drivers. And, and it even touches on recyclers, which I think is a, is a pretty comprehensive piece here. One thought, again, depending on the finality of the document, one constituency that I didn't overtly mention, and it might have been implicitly mentioned in there or otherwise treated appropriately in the, in the existing master plan, would be that of the, the baby boomers, right? There's a, there's a significant amount of our population that will be aging. And as they age, much of the Complete Streets Initiative talks about, you know, making it safe to, to use the roads regardless of age or ability. And I was just wondering if, if there were any additional treatments or considerations that might be appropriate for that, for that demographic and, and the, the kinds of opportunities and needs that they might have, if we may choose to add some additional language or suggestions to help that demographic above and beyond any of the others that the quite comprehensive and impressive list of subjects already addressed. So that was my initial comment or thought on that.
Councilmember Platt Onson?
I had two small things that, one of which, maybe both of which, came up throughout the Planning Commission discussions and didn't necessarily make it concretely into this. One was, I know there was great discussion about the area on Coolidge from Katalba to 12 Mile in that I believe there is one crossing point for pedestrians. I think at Wiltshire, there's one official crossing point. And I know there was some discussion going around by the Planning Commission on, you know, does that need to be addressed? It's sort of a great distance to travel in between if you're trying to get from shops on one side to the other. And we've had quite a business boom on Coolidge in the last couple of years. And then the other was, and now I'm going to forget. Oh. In regards to the bus rapid transit, that's, you know, this ever-evolving plan, is there anything that we can put into the plan to sort of address what, what might happen in the, hopefully, near future on Woodward and how we might want to be positioned for that?
Seems like an excellent idea. Give any reaction to that suggestion?
I think it's a good suggestion. I think we can certainly add something with regard to transit. I know, having been at those meetings with the ever-changing, is it going to be bus rapid transit? Is it not? Oh, yes, it is. Oh, no, it's not. And it's a moving target. There were prelimi, there was, all the communities have a different idea. And I was very surprised because I had, even when it was light rail, had sort of, maybe this was sort of simplistic, thought it was going to be on Woodward. was sort of simplistic, thought it was going to be on Woodward Avenue. And I was very surprised to hear that the folks in Royal Oak think, well, you know, we have train tracks. How about if you just use those? Which, okay, but it certainly impacts the different communities, and so it is very much a moving target, but I think certainly a statement that would support transit, which I think certainly the community would do, whether it's a half a mile away or a mile away. That's a benefit to this area. With regard to the Coolidge crossing, I talk in general about Coolidge, that there's lots of different ideas, and it just really needs to be studied very in-depth and decide what can we do to make sure the ambulances could get through and the businesses can still stay afloat and people can safely park their cars without losing their side mirrors.
Councilmember Blanchard?
One quick count I noticed in here, they talked about street art, and I noticed the graphic was a picture of a fire hydrant. With Sergeant Kelly in the audience, I'd like to say that there are requirements for certain color codes on certain fire hydrants, so when we pull up to a fire, we know what the water situation is going to be. So, if the Planning Commission is thinking about that, we need to roll that in with Sergeant Kelly's opinion and make sure that we do it the right way.
I have a memo to the Public Safety Department, and there have been discussions about that. Oh, you guys are no fun. We can incorporate the colors into it.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Kadekell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Vanson and Planning Commission members. As I went through this over and over, I saw a lot of dollar signs.
Too many.
Too many, as you say.
Not too many.
Somewhere we could get grants, somewhere we couldn't. One, any idea of where that money may come from, those where we're not available to get the grants? And two, do you have any type of priority as to where you want to focus? I realize it's a process, but is there a priority, what area you'd want to focus on first?
Well, first off, this is a plan. It's not a capital improvement plan as part of the city's budget. So, similar to a master plan, there's all kinds of ideas in it, and it is something that's supposed to inform capital improvement decisions and the budgeting decision process. That's why the Planning Commission does adopt the capital improvement plan every year that the Finance Department very ably puts together for their review. But obviously, if the money's not there, the money's not there. If I want to go to Hawaii and my budget doesn't allow me to, then I don't go to Hawaii, even though that was in the grand plan of things.
You can stay in Berkeley. It's a lot of fun.
Okay, I'll stay in Berkeley. Certainly, the things that don't cost money are going to be the easy ones to, relatively easy to pick off this list and get accomplished. Having said that, they're going to have a much more limited impact as opposed to a special assessment that's going to redo all of the sidewalks and all of the lampposts and all of the everything along a major corridor. But that takes more money, it takes more time, it takes more commitment, and so, once this is adopted, the Planning Commission can begin doing ordinance amendments, and I can work with the community. I won't work on the fire hydrants right away, but we can work on some other things with regard to, as far as a hierarchy of bus stops, so that if and when money does become available, where should the shelter go? I had mentioned in here, or this is, it's mentioned in the plan, the figuring out exactly where bike racks should go. When we did receive a grant for bicycle racks, there was, there was a lot of meetings as far as, just with staff, on where those bike racks ought to be placed so that they didn't block a door, they didn't block parked cars, they didn't provide an obstruction if you're turning and trying to make a left-hand turn so that you can see, those sorts of things. So, I think having some standards adopted ahead of time so that when we get another grant for bike racks, we know right away, oh, here, 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 and here, and it's a much more easy process. So, those are things that would be easy to check off the list, but they're going to have more limited impact. Certainly, I think you all understand that versus the ones that cost more money. Just like the little trip to Sagatuck versus the two-week vacation to Hawaii, you know, it's just different. Not better, worse, just different.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Vanson. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this?
Good evening, everyone. Eric Onson, City of Berkeley. I'm also a member of the Environmental Advisory Committee, and Councilwoman Baker asked us kindly to review the plan, and I'm here tonight to give some of our feedback on that. As a committee, we strongly support the principles of complete streets as a way to increase Berkeley's already pedestrian-friendly streets and improve bicycle and mass transit access while still accommodating car and truck movement. We're very pleased to see Planning Commission starting to develop some concepts for complete streets implementation as the City Council reviews the master plan for the city. Most of us were kind of, we were kind of hoping for a little more specifics with this plan, so I'll pass around what I'm reading from tonight. I won't go through each one point by point, but wanted to offer some specific comments moving forward. The EAC has the following comments for the Planning Commission as they begin to create an actual plan. Number one, include a plan to increase green space as roads and sidewalks are resurfaced or re-engineered. Specifically regarding Coolidge Road, there should be some focus on green space or tree planting if the road layout is modified. If the new cross-section included a landscape area or trees, it'd be more pleasant for walking. Also, if depressed landscape areas were used, it would provide a beneficial impact for stormwater runoff and treatment rather than entirely impervious right-of-way. Number two, a big component of any of these plans is public awareness and education. This is discussed to some extent with the schools, however, this needs to be discussed more in this document. For example, the improvement of the bus stops is a good idea, however, the city should do more to promote the use of public transportation, even if it is as simple as putting information on their website about how to get to places using the smart bus system. The importance of public education should be considered in the plan as there may be costs associated with it. We urge the Planning Commission and the Council to fully consider what is being done in surrounding communities as the process goes forward, not just with regard to bike routes, but with regard to the whole plan. Both Woodward and 12 Mile and Woodward and 11 Mile road intersections are issues where intergovernmental cooperation is vital. We encourage the Planning Commission and the Council to review Royal Oak's non-motorized transportation plan because this will provide specifics on what our neighbors are planning. Overall, the Environmental Advisory Committee is encouraged by the ideas that the Planning Commission is recommending. However, we hope these ideas gain more specifics on how they will be implemented before being included as part of the master plan or a transportation plan for Berkeley. Further, we anticipate that having a plan with more substance could help the city obtain grant support to fund some of these projects. Thank you for taking the time, and we appreciate everyone's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other additional comments? Overall, you know, my response to this is, first of all, to congratulate and thank our city planner and the Planning Commission for the excellent work that is involved in this and providing directional guidelines for the future. And the specifics, I think, will come as we go forward. So, I am encouraged by this document, and I think the sense of the Council is also that we move forward and fundamentally endorse what, and also, there are some questions raised here without an answer, which is excellent, actually, you know, like snow removal issues in the business district. The point is raised, we don't have an exact useful answer at the moment, and I like that, that it doesn't have a kind of a closed, you know, complete set of answers to everything, that it is a kind of a living document that moves forward and can be adjusted as we go into the next several years.
Yeah, that's what a plan does. It makes recommendations on how to move forward.
Exactly. So, Mr. Sessa?
Just very quickly, Your Honor, I like your comments. I agree with them. What I'd like to add also, I know that the Planning Commission is going to be reviewing this further, and I know that you will be holding public hearings, but perhaps, just so that the public can see this and read this document in more detail, I'd like to put it on our website so that our residents can see it and perhaps get more comments as you go through the process in our, for our Planning Commission. So, I thought, Your Honor, if that's okay with the City Council, if you don't mind, we'll put it on our website. Everybody can see it.
Good idea. Good idea. Ms. Onson?
I have a follow-up question. You mentioned yourself a lot of next steps, specific things that might happen to come up with a specific bike route or a specific plan for Coolidge. At what point does that get worked in? Does that get worked into the master plan itself? Is that something that comes up issue by issue? I know in terms of getting funding, it's a lot easier if it's shovel-ready, is that the term? So, if we already knew, okay, we're going to need, we have a route, we just need to fund signs, or we know we need bike racks and we think we need about this many of this kind, you know, it's easier to move forward and apply for those things. How does that, that sort of, how do the next steps get worked in, and how do we go about sort of capitalizing on that?
Well, I think based upon the Council's, you know, discussion tonight, the Planning Commission, as I said, can start working on the various items. And with regard to the bike route itself, that's going to involve a lot more people involved, and it's going to involve public safety. It's certainly not just going to be the Planning Commission sitting down to a map. It's going to involve public safety and recreation, and the Planning Commission is aware of the Royal Oak non-motorized plan that's being considered. They did review it. And so, all of those linkages are going to, are being factored in, but it's going to involve public works as well as public safety to look at which routes make the most sense from a safety standpoint. And then, as you said, then you have to start looking at, okay, how many signs? And so, it's going to involve administration, and that's not something I can't prepare to commit Director Eschman or Director Schuler as far as what their time allotments are going to be. That would be up to Ms. Sessa.
Okay, Ms. Sessa?
I think you've got some good points, Your Honor. Obviously, I think Councilmember Kadekell mentioned the dollar issue, and based on whatever the Planning Commission comes forth and from what we hear from the City Council, then we'll present these at perhaps some of our budget hearings as we move forward. Obviously, funds are very limited, but we'll take a look at everything, and if it's doable, then we'll begin the procedures to take the next steps such as, you know, having our engineers conduct a, or do a plan so that we know exactly where the signs are going to be, or whatever need be. But once this is all said and done, then I'll sit down with the staff, and we will present some budget recommendations before the City Council. And obviously, given our financial constraints and the priorities that are set forth by the City Council, then we can move on. But this is something that I know is very important to the City Council, so please know that I don't intend to put this on the backboard. This is something that I know is important to everybody here, and I'll do my best to implement it as quickly as I can. But we will, I'll work with staff to develop a good plan, and then we'll move forward.
And to answer your question with regard to adoption specifically, once that commitment was made that, okay, we're going to move forward, this is something we want to put in the budget, that we're going to specifically spell out how many signs we need and so forth, and if it is something that Ms. Sessa feels needs to have outside assistance, and it's not something that just the DPW Director and the Public Safety Director can work on, when that bike plan is adopted, then that would come to the City Council, obviously, as well.
I was thinking more in terms of that in-between step that you had talked about, figuring out the specifics, as opposed to the getting all the way to the budget that you were talking about of actually implementing it. So, I was just thinking, like, what's our timeframe? And I think you addressed it, but the timeframe for actually the in-between step of figuring out, okay, and some of them may require budget, some of them may require engineering or things like that, but.
And I think it's a matter of Ms. Sessa directing the various departments to work on it. It has to become a priority that way.
But also, some of them are simply an add-on to other projects that may be going on.
Absolutely.
So, it is not like we're going through a list of all of these things to do them right away.
Exactly.
But rather, as we conduct our business.
Yes.
And make improvements in so many other areas, these things get feathered in as they arise.
And sometimes, unfortunately, Your Honor, because, I mean, looking at the costs, and some of them are doable, and we might, you know, we can just include them, as the mayor was saying, and then there'll be others where they'll be a little bit more expensive, and, you know, we do have a budget that's been adopted by our Council that may take a little bit of time. So, sometimes, the in-between steps may have to wait until we go before the City Council because it's going to take a major undertaking, and it's going to require a lot of staff time and perhaps going out for consultants and things of that nature. But I know that this is important. I've been given my directive by the City Council, and I'm waiting for the Planning Commission to finish up their plans and work together with everybody so that we can begin implementing this. So, I get it. It's not something you want me to put on the back burner, so we'll get started. We already are started, I should say.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other final comments on this? Very good. Hearing none. Then, thank you, Ms. Vanson. Thank you to the Planning Commission for everybody that worked on this, and we'll continue to work on it going forward. Ms. Prince, would you please, is it a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kadekell. Support by Mayor Protem Terbrak. Please call the roll.
Terbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Pat Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?